Members, I'd like you all to welcome Governor Jeff Landry. President Pro temp Regina Barrow will lead us in the prayer. And please remain standing for the pledge.
Thank you, Mr. President. If you would, please join me for a moment of prayer. Someone sent this quote to me the other day, and I want to use it. "Those who leave everything in God's hand will eventually see God's hand in everything." Please bow your head. Father, in the name of Jesus, I lift up your name, and I thank you for another day and another opportunity to come before your throne of grace. Lord, I am turning everything into your hands so that we may see your hand in everything that we are doing in this session. Lord, I ask you to be with every member that is here, to be with our governor, to be with the president, and to be with our speaker. I thank you, Lord, that as we are discussing these decisions, that you, Father God, will continue to lead us in all that we do. Lord, we yield our will to your will so that your purpose on earth may be fulfilled. And Lord, as we are looking at these measures and discussing these decisions, we thank you, Father God, we are doing what is in the best interest of the citizens of the state of Louisiana. So, Lord, we lift up the state of Louisiana, and we thank you, Lord, that this state is in your hand, and, Father, you are continuing to do what is profitable for the state of Louisiana. So, Lord, we ask all of the blessings in your darling son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Members, please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, members. Ladies and gentlemen, it's my pleasure to introduce you all to the governor of Louisiana, Jeff Landry.
Thank you. Mr. Speaker, Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the House and Senate, thank you for your warm welcome, and thank you all for the service to the people of our state, whose hope for a safer Louisiana brings us to their capital. The ongoing debate and the day-to-day work we are deeply involved in here in this capital of improving our economy, of protecting our environment, and reforming our educational system, they all lose significance if our communities are not safe. As Attorney General, I warned that the goal of the criminal justice reform should not be about letting people out of jail. It should be about how to keep people from going to jail. And those warnings went unheeded. Last year, I promised the people of the state of Louisiana, if elected governor, I would do everything within my power to improve the safety of our communities through both legislative and executive action. Today, we continue that process. Now, everyone in this room is aware that crime has put a national spotlight on our great state. In 2021, Louisiana had the highest violent crime rate in the nation. In 2022, three of our cities were in the top 10 most dangerous cities in America. 280 people were murdered that year in New Orleans, earning that city the title of the murder capital of the country. Last year, more children were murdered in New Orleans than in any year in the past decade, in that year, in any year in the past decade. While these statistics are sobering, they can seemingly be just numbers or some passing news story. However, for the victims, it is life-altering. The effect of being a victim of crime does not end in the day after. For most, the nightmare only just begins. While these victims carry the burden of loss, they are also thrown into the unknowns of a criminal justice system that has forgotten them. The proposals that we lay out today were constructed by listening, by listening to the voices of the people, by listening to those responsible for protecting us, for listening to those responsible for administering justice, and listening to those who matter most, the victims of crime. Today, I invite you to meet some of the faces of the crime statistics in Louisiana, who are up in the balcony, faces like Mr. and Mrs. Wayne Gazardo, who are here today. Mr. Wayne, yes, please, stand, please. Mr. Gazardo and his wife are here today on behalf of their daughter Stephanie. In 1995, Stephanie was murdered along with her coworker at Calendres Restaurant here in Baton Rouge. Stephanie pleaded for her life as Todd Wesinger pulled the trigger, robbing the Gazardos of their beautiful daughter. They have lived with pain each day with a promise of justice that goes unanswered. Now, our criminal justice system has lost its balance. The steps we take to restore that balance may be difficult to accept for some. However, when promises are made to victims' families and friends, granting them that justice restores the balance. Our capital punishment law serves to bring justice for crimes of horrific violence. When these sentences are handed down, they form a covenant between the state and the victims and their families and their friends. And justice requires that we uphold that covenant. We propose legislation that would declare that any and all records or information pertaining to carrying out these sentences be strictly confidential and not subject to public disclosure. The legislation would make it a felony to violate that law and also allow the victims' families to recover damages. Now, should our state be unable to obtain the necessary drugs? I propose legislation would provide alternative legal methods of carrying out these sentences that have been approved by our courts. Capital punishment is lawful, and we intend to fulfill our legal duty to resume it for the justice of these families. Now, while planning these proposals, I sought input from those in law enforcement. As a former police officer and sheriff's deputy, I have seen the very best and the very worst that a community has to offer. I have walked in the very shoes of those who stand on that thin blue line, protecting us from those who seek to disrupt the peace that we all deserve in our communities. We are honored to have with us today Sheriff Doug A. Bear and Sheriff Kevin Cobb. They're both the current and past presidents of the Louisiana Sheriff's Association, and they are joined here with several other sheriffs and local law enforcement officers. Our law enforcement offices serve you with bravery and dedication while being underpaid, underappreciated, under-equipped for a tireless, thankless, and dangerous job we ask them to perform day and night. They sacrifice their lives for you and me. It is time we sacrifice more than rhetoric for them. They encounter the worst. It's time we give them the best. They have our back. It's time we had theirs. Risking their lives for us should not mean risking civil liability when one makes a good faith error or when faced with a meritless accusation. That is why the qualified immunity we seek in this session will give them confidence and peace of mind as they perform their job. The proposed legislation will also help us recruit the best and brightest in law enforcement. It will reduce the number of unnecessary and, in many instances, frivolous lawsuits filed against our offices and our agencies, and all without sacrificing public safety. I have always stood with these men and women and will continue to protect them when they perform their duties in good faith, and you should too. I ask you, reach out to these officers in your district, ask their advice on the proposed legislation, which you will hear from the very best your community has to offer, is how we can help protect them to protect us. I have also listened carefully to our district attorneys, their assistants, and many judges who administer our criminal justice system on a daily basis. They have expressed their frustration with the leniency of sentencing and our misguided post-conviction programs that feed recidivism by constantly returning unreformed, unrepentant, and violent criminals to our neighborhoods. The revolving door is insulting in this state. Right now, up to 70% of a sentence may be removed for good time. This good time requires no effort of the inmate to participate in any programs that would provide him or her with educational and job opportunities, job skill trainings, or rehabilitative services. The good time is rewarded to these inmates really with no effort on their part. It's like, but it's like a participation trophy for jail. What we need is truth in sentencing that will incentivize inmates to complete certain reentry programs, to earn a GED, to learn a job skill, and in doing so, earn a reduction in their sentences, preparing them to rejoin society in a productive, safe, and responsible manner. Real rehabilitation not only makes our community safer, but it is also cost-effective. You see, without meaningful reform, those being released come back into the system again and again, making our communities less safe. This has caused violent crime to rise, families to be put at risk, and our criminal justice system to remain broken. So where is the cost savings in that? You know, many may say, focus on the cost. I say let's focus on the cost to society. I say let's focus to the cost to our citizens in the loss of property, in the disruption of their lives, in the irreparable tragedy of losing a loved one. In attempting to bring truth in sentencing, we propose legislation that limits the number of claims that may be filed by convicted felon. There are real monetary savings in that legislation, which will help to offset any cost associated with any of the other proposals. The two-year prescription for filing an inmate claim is currently not being enforced, resulting in hundreds of frivolous claims by inmates costing the state lots of money. Sadly, we have seen radical activists hard at work to empty our prisons. They disregard the deadlines that are in place for seeking post-conviction relief. Similarly, there has been a complete disregard for the policies put in place by the pardon and parole board. So I'm asking you for mandatory deadlines to be put in place so that these victims are not misled. The legislation will also require that an inmate not commit a disciplinary offense for at least three years prior to a hearing. Any consideration in sentencing should be merit-based. That's what my mom would say. With our focus on the victims, we propose a mandatory 90-day notice be provided to them prior to any hearing being granted. You see, by continuing to focus on the victims, we send a message that they shall once and for all be heard in the process of criminal justice reform, and they demand transparency. The lack of transparency in our criminal justice system is completely unacceptable. These victims walk around in the dark without a flashlight. Neither victims nor defendants nor the general public have access to information about what exactly is going on in our criminal courts on a daily basis. Ask Dr. Patrick Dennis, who's up in the balcony, and who testified before this legislature about being held at gunpoint by a juvenile. He was never notified of his trial date, and only to learn later that the gunman was released. The same juvenile that held him up held 14 other victims at gunpoint within three days. Ask Elizabeth and Noah Hanser. Where's Noah? Where's Elizabeth? There she is. Noah, God bless you. Elizabeth, Noah's mother, appeared before the legislature last year because he was robbed and shot in New Orleans by a juvenile. He is now confined to a wheelchair. Elizabeth and Noah have no way to access information about their case in the juvenile court system. They have no idea if the shooter had a previous criminal record. Ask Ms. Sherilyn Price. Ms. Sherilyn, take a look at her. Ms. Sherilyn. She testified before many of you all how she was misled about the murder of her son, the popular comedian Boogie B. Boogie B was struck by a stray bullet in a grocery store parking lot when he was in town visiting his family for Christmas. Ms. Sherilyn was never informed when a perpetrator was arrested nor that a bond hearing was set. Jana and Jalen Blunt join us today. Take a good look at these young ladies. Their mother was summarily executed by her ex-boyfriend in a parking lot outside of her apartment complex. The perpetrator fled to Tennessee, where he shot a police officer. At the time he murdered their mother, he had been arrested 25 times and was on probation. These women, they deserve answers to some very important questions. Why was he given probation? Why was he out on the street? What happened at each of the 25 prior arrests? They deserve answers. What we do today gives them those answers. You know, but sadly, these are only but a few stories out of the thousands that can be told in support of our truth and transparency program, which we tried to pass last year. Victims and the public have a right to know what's happening in our criminal justice system and where it is failing. Our transparency legislation will allow people access to information and provide online access to data from our criminal and juvenile courts. Through this simple and common sense measure, we hope to see what's going on inside the system and ease the suffering of victims, offer them more transparency in a legal process, and find better solutions to our crime problem. Now, you know, Louisiana was once defined by our great cities. They were gems of the South, cornerstones of our state. Over the past two years, Baton Rouge, Shreveport, and New Orleans have all made the top 10 most dangerous cities in the country. New Orleans made the top 10 most dangerous cities in the world. Carjackings, homicides, violent crime, juvenile gangs terrorize the citizens of those cities. I have listened carefully. I have heard their pleas. I have felt their frustration. I have seen their sorrow, and I have watched as they have wept and prayed for relief from the palpable pain that crime has brought to their neighborhoods. You ask anyone in the world where Louisiana is, and some may hesitate. You ask them where New Orleans is, they know instantly. It is one of our greatest treasures. Restoring the city of New Orleans and safety in it is a tide that will lift all boats in this state. But sadly, crime is plaguing that city. Where right now, right now, listen to this statistic, right now in the city of New Orleans, one in every 14 black men will be murdered by the age of 35. Now, where is the justice in that? Previous governors and legislators have dispatched and funded the state police in the city at certain times with the goal of securing the French Quarter and the business district. And while these initiatives have had short-term success, once relaxed, the effort becomes lost. I say it is time to secure that entire city. These ladies and gentlemen in blue are prepared, and we are proposing a NOLA troupe in the city of New Orleans, whose goal is to help protect the entire city and all of its citizens, not just the tourists and the business areas. Because the people who labor in that city, they deserve to live in peace and safety as well. Carjackings are plaguing the city and terrifying the residents. In March of 2022, four teenagers from ages of 15 to 17 attempted to steal 73-year-old Linda Fricki's car. They sprayed Ms. Fricki with mace, they punched her, and in trying to pull her out of her car, she became entangled in her seatbelt. And as they drove away, they drug her. Ms. Fricki was dragged over 200 yards before being dislodged from the car, ripping her arm from her body, where she died 20 minutes later. Her sister Jenny Lynn is here with us today. Along with her is Ms. Nadia Sanchez of New Orleans, whose mother, Jeanette, was carjacked in New Orleans in 2018. During that carjacking, the perpetrators rode over her and killed her with her own car in her own driveway in front of her own family. She is here today as well. These ladies, these families sadly are but a fraction of the carjacking horror stories that are unfolding in our cities and underscoring why we are proposing to elevate the mandatory minimum sentencing for carjacking. We propose elevating it from two to five years. And if the act results in bodily injury, the mandatory minimum shall be 20 years. And ladies, with all due respect, those who make the decision to carjack someone in Louisiana, hear me clearly, they better hope the car is full of gas and can take them where we could never find them, because when we do, they will spend a long, long time in jail. Now, as you are aware, many of the crimes we discussed today, and the victims and the families who are here have been committed by juveniles, highlighting how our juvenile system is failing our kids. Mr. Cortez Collins is here. You may have heard me speak of him at the inauguration. Cortez, did he make it here? Oh, I'll tell his story anyhow. He's an unbelievable patriot. He's a police officer. His 17-year-old son, Carterian, was senselessly shot and killed in December of 2022 by a juvenile. Carterian was a high school senior. The case was not transferred to adult court, as it should have been, and the murderer of Cortez's son will only serve a few years for his heinous act. Now, go explain that to him. Go tell him where that justice is. You know, the former administration's criminal justice reinvestment lowered the age of 17-year-olds charged with a violent crime. But by lowering the age, it has resulted in actual incidents of older criminals recruiting 17-year-olds for criminal activity, knowing that the consequences to them would be minimal. It has fast-tracked too many of our teenagers into a life of crime, and the effect has been catastrophic. These juveniles are not innocent children. They are hardened criminals. They violently attack our citizens, our law enforcement officers, and juvenile correctional officers without hesitation. Ask Darrell Scott, who's here today, who was robbed and shot. Darrell, there he is. He's in a wheelchair. Thanks, Darrell. Ladies and gentlemen, I beg you to take a look at Darrell, because he was shot by a 13-year-old while walking in New Orleans East, and he's now paralyzed and confined to a wheelchair. The juvenile who did this was not able to be transferred to adult court because he was too young. He has been moved to an unsecured facility where he has escaped again and again and again. An unacceptable amount of the senseless shootings going on in this state are being performed by those 17 years old and younger. And if you ask correctional officers in these juvenile facilities, they will tell you that 16 and 17-year-olds have destroyed our juvenile detention facilities. And as a result, we are paying other states, your local governments are paying other states up to $600 a day per juvenile to house our violent offenders in some other state. We propose to correct the age by legislating the prosecution of any person 17 years of age charged with a felony be tried as an adult. charged with a felony be tried as an adult. Furthermore, the proposal will require all juveniles adjudicated of any violent crime be held in custody for a minimum of three years. Now, I questioned a friend of mine who has been in law enforcement his entire life whether he has ever pursued or arrested someone for a homicide who possessed a concealed carry permit. He could not cite one instance. Yet while criminals carry guns without regard for the law, lawful gun owners are the most law-abiding citizens we have. Their armed presence helps deter violent crime. It is time Louisiana joined 27 other states who have created a constitutional right to carry a firearm without first obtaining the government's permission to do so. This body has repeatedly passed this bill, and now you have a governor who will sign it. Now, our proposal does not terminate the concealed carry process because many citizens travel to other states with firearms, and that permit will satisfy the reciprocity demands of other states. We also offered enhanced immunity from liability when one is forced to use a firearm lawfully and has a concealed permit. Now, we all know that good people can make bad decisions, and they deserve a second chance. So we ask that you work with us to expand our drug courts. It is noted that completing drug court programs, the person receives structure and supervision, and nearly 50% of those who participate are less likely to be arrested again. That is why in 2021, this body passed a bill to do just that. But unfortunately, the bill was vetoed over politics. Now, you have a governor who will sign it. We must also protect the constitutional safeguards to console for the poorest and intigent among us. We currently spend $75 million a year on public defenders for those unable to pay for their criminal defense. The Louisiana public defender system lacks accountability and has strayed from providing defense and moving criminal cases through the system. We propose to increase transparency and refocus the mission of providing defenders and support personnel for much-needed efficiency. Now, I would again like to share my gratitude to the wary victims of crime who have joined us here today. I ask that you take the time and show the courage to hear their stories because when you do, you will hear what I have heard. You will see their pain. You will witness their patience dissipating. You will feel the burning desire for the justice they endure every waking hour. And you will conclude, like me, that the simplicity of right and wrong that once guided society has sadly and dangerously been misplaced. The propensity of some to signal their virtuous compassion for criminals has become a badge of honor for too many liberals who, without forethought of the consequences to society and the danger it creates in our neighborhoods and homes, they turn reckless commentary into political causes which undermine the principles that have made this country safe. So today, I ask you to place the voices of the tired, the wary, and the broken-hearted victims of crime above the irresponsible rhetoric that is destroying our quality of life. Now, this time, I would like anyone who is a victim of crime who can to please stand. And I would ask, if you mind, please stay standing. I would ask all in law enforcement to please stand and remain standing. To the ladies and gentlemen of the legislature, I say to you this. Let this session be about them and those who protect us. Let us take back our streets for them. Let us empower our citizens to live in lives without fear and mourning. Let us end the irresponsible and deadly tolerance for violence, flagrant theft, and the dealing of deadly drugs. Our good citizens work hard. They play hard. They play by the rules, only to seek to raise their families in peace. Let us place their values above selfish, above the selfish, criminal-minded element that is destroying our quality of life. And so I humbly ask you, they humbly ask you, adopt these proposals in this session for the people, for the next generation, for our law enforcement offices, and for these victims of crime. God bless you.